And today we'll call it a week of order if you send an indication and if you're managing on the stage, you can rule as you will. Our God, we thank you for this day, the blessings of life, the glory of your handiwork that we've been a part of and enjoyed today. We thank you for the privilege it is to serve our community and we ask tonight that the wisdom of many heads would prevail and every deliberation that we take tonight will be resolved in a manner that's best for our town. And we thank you for all these things and get yours up in the Lord in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the revival of which stands on the nation under God, indivisible, eternal, just as for all. And just for a trivia, here in the pledge of allegiance, the words of our God really added to it in most of our lifetimes, maybe with the exception of me and Shirley, most of us were all living when that was added. And if you look at it dramatically, we had a teacher one time who tried to teach us some change in the way of saying the pledge, there's no one nation under God, there's no commas or punctuation errors. It should be one nation under God. That never did catch on, but that's the way that it's written. That's our trivia for tonight, for life. Let's move as quickly as we can and do as good as we can tonight. Is everybody plugged in and turned on? Turned on, tuned in? All right. Okay. Thank you. We all have our agenda and if you've had an opportunity to look at it, we would accept a motion to approve the consent agenda unless there's corrections or deletions or changes that need to be made. Anybody want to pull anything off? I won't put it off to discuss later, but the fire department's minutes. We don't seem to be making any headway about getting good minutes and as we, well, I got that on my end yesterday. Is there anybody who wants to pull anything off the consent agenda? Do we entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Have a motion to approve as your second?
Our second.
Have a motion as second. Any discussion on the motion? Hey, Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Can I, yes, of course. Yes, Sheriff, yes. Hey, we don't have anyone on the agenda, so that will bring us to the non-agenda audience and I believe you've got John on the phone.
He's right there. Just one minute.
We have John in press. Say, John, come on around and tell us a lot of good news.
The well project, you know, the one we discussed, I believe was at the last meeting. Ms. Lynn called me today and Ms. Lynn, I didn't catch the name of the gentleman that reached out to you in regards to the vertical turbine or the submersible pump, two different types of pumps. And I think Mr. Register with the city or who does y'all's, contracted out to test y'all's well there, wants a submersible. Who was the gentleman today?
They want the turbine.
Who was that? Who?
It was Mr., the guy with Palmer Electric.
Okay. And he's basically stating what I kind of brought up at the last meeting was is your current controls and your current panels and everything that's there is connected to a vertical turbine. And he's just saying, hey, that's going to be easier to do. Again, Ms. Lynn and I talked and the well's out now. It's completely, hasn't been working, I think, for maybe seven days, she said. And so we just want to bring that back up to you. I guess we'll need a vote. I don't really know. I told her it won't really hinder what we're doing. You know, I think we can still go out for bid for both and just see which one's cheaper. But at the end of the day, the vertical turbine for y'all scenario at the park is a vertical turbine. Not saying that, again, I'm not saying that it has to be, that you can't go to a submersible. You can. I just think financially, and I think there's just going to be some issues with trying to go to a submersible. I think it would behoove me to maybe have a discussion with this guy with Palmer Electric just to get a sense of what he's thinking, but I'm pretty sure it's kind of what I already I don't know that I necessarily need a motion, but I wanted to bring that just to your attention of the conversation that Ms. Lynn and I've had. And I told her I'd bring that up just to kind of share it with you guys so it's transparent and there's no, you know, the well's out. So I mean, we gotta, we gotta get a set of plans completed and out and approved by DEO, which I don't think will be, we're not far, we're close. I think in the next two weeks, we can be done.
And if you remember, initially we wrote the grant, it was for the turbine.
That's right, I wrote the turbine, yep.
Turbine. The council voted a month or so ago to go back to, to go to the submersible. We changed, you know, changed your mind and we voted to go to the submersible. Florida Commerce will have to approve that change if we do that. And so we had, Fred Fox and John had already spoken about drawing the plans for both the submersible and the turbine so we could get it through Florida Commerce quickly. But Mr. Register is adamant that he says with the system we've got over there with the wellhouse, that we need the turbine pump. It's above ground, it's easier to service, easier to do maintenance on.
He said what?
He wants us to stay with the turbine that we have.
It's just easier. So a submersible's all underground. I didn't say that. I will agree with what he's saying, but I didn't state that. I just, so what Mr. Palmer or with Palmer Electric is saying, the guy there, basically...
I thought earlier in your presentation, if any of us, not to be rude, just...
No, no, no.
Why I said that, I thought earlier in the presentation you said, or one of you said that Mr. Register wanted a submersible.
Yeah.
You didn't say that, like, did you?
If I didn't, I was going to say, he wants, he wants the vertical turbine.
Mr. Register, I think, wants a submersible.
Well, I thought you said...
No, he wants the turbine.
Oh, he doesn't? Okay.
He wants the turbine.
Okay.
Because I told him we had voted to go to the submersible. He said, y'all making a big mistake, making a big mistake there. So him and Palmer now are wanting us to stay with what we've got.
Okay, okay. I know at one point then Mr. Register did want, you know, somebody in the town had wanted to go to a submersible, but now wanting to go back to a vertical turbine, which is good. Now, to me, I think...
You don't remember what meeting that was?
Whatever, I don't remember why. I don't remember us voting for that. I thought he was going to get us processed on both of them.
Yeah, I was just going to still bid out both. I guess maybe my question now is, is do, can I, because it will take a lot more time if there's still some, you know, to do both. It still takes a little time to do that. If we're in agreeance upon, hey, get rid of a submersible, let's just go to a vertical turbine. So the electric guys and Mr. Register said go to just vertical turbine. I can ask the submersible and just get that going and not have to worry about it, unless y'all still want to see both. I'm pretty confident in the stating that the submersible is, it's going to be astronomically higher than vertical turbine. But I don't mind doing both if, you know, Ms. Shirley or the mayor, if that's what y'all want me to do, I can.
No, I agree with Shirley. I thought that's what we asked for.
It was.
But at that time, there was more, there was more uncertain about, maybe we just want to do both.
That's right.
I think I hear you say now, if we joke with submersible, we've got to rewire or put in a new box or something like that. The box will go...
All the controls and all that will have to be different, the setup, the layout, the house.
That'll serve the vertical turbine.
Right. I mean, that's what's there.
There's going to be an added cost if we do go to...
It will add, how much I don't know, but there will be significant cost increase.
If we voted, I'm trying to remember now what I...
We didn't vote, we just talked about it.
I think, I think I just said, hey, I'll do both and that way we can advertise both.
That's what he said.
And just have a bid offer for a submersible and see what, you know, the alternate is, if the vertical turbine's one price and get an alternate for a submersible and see that price. But there, and again, I don't know who it was with the town, but somebody...
I'm sorry, it was in August. We voted to go from a submersible to a vertical turbine. Okay, so that's what we're doing. It's under the agenda audience on August 15th. John discussed changing the specs of the well from a submersible pump to a vertical turbine. Feels the submersible pump would cause us to go over budget and so there was a vote...
It's a vertical turbine there now.
Change from a submersible to a...
I don't know why we're changing. It's a vertical turbine there now, so I don't know what, how that got crosswired, but it's not a submersible right now. It's a vertical turbine.
Okay. We have it, we have it right then. So the vertical turbine is what we're wanting. And was that on the original plans?
It wasn't on the...
So I think Ms., who was the town clerk? I can't mark it. I think she, from the day one, when I took over, she said, hey, we want a submersible pump out at the park. No problem.
So the plans were made when...
And as we've started to, you know, once we finally got that into contract, they could finally start designing it, that's when we realized there's a vertical turbine currently on site. And to go back to a vertical turbine is naturally going to be easier than going to a submersible. You know, it's like, I can't give you an analogy, but with it being a vertical turbine, your whole patrol is your building and all set up for a vertical turbine pump.
Okay.
Now, can you go to a submersible? Absolutely. You can do anything. It's just going to increase the cost. I think that's where this whole, I think Mr. Register wanted something and maybe he's back on the, on the vertical turbine now. I don't know.
And that might be the confusion because I know Fred had told us we would have to go back to Florida Commerce if we changed the initial plans.
We would.
Which it looks like was the submersible.
Yeah.
And we went to the vertical turbine.
That's, if we went to vertical turbine, that's correct.
So have we done that?
Or so we're going to have to go to Florida Commerce for that.
That, that will be, I don't think that'll be a big deal with DEO.
Okay.
I'm almost, I feel confident saying that will be a quick email and a, okay, we'll get your amendment and sign it. I don't think that's going to be an issue.
Okay. Are we all understanding now what we're talking? Is there, I got a question about what we just talked about.
And if you still want me to do both, that's fine. I can spec out both, but if we want to...
In terms of...
The two types of wells.
In terms of, in terms of a pump is to get water out of the ground and get it into the system.
Yep.
Is either one work better than the other? They both do the same thing?
There's, yes, sir. I mean, there's, the pros and cons are there some for both, sure, that may be different, but you know, the pros of kind of what Mr. Palmer Electric is stating is, hey, if there's ever an issue, it's a drive up to the pump, to the well here and fix it because it's above ground. Whereas a submersible, the entire thing's 200 feet to ground and you got to get that whole thing out of there. Now, I think submersibles tend to tear up a little bit less than vertical turbine. But still, when it does tear up, it is a process to get that out of the ground and fix. That's just the nature of it being 200 feet to ground or however low that, I think it's 200. I looked it up on Oculus the other day. I think y'all's well there is about 215 feet to ground there, I think, if I remember correctly.
Mr. Porter, you have a question about what we discussed?
Well, we're either going to go with a submersible or a above ground pump.
Well, that's what we're going to vote on, but do you have a question before?
How long, how long has this pump been in there? When was the last time it was changed? A long time.
I'll bet when that, our water system was last.
I could probably look, look that up and send that to Ms. Lynn on DEP's permit portal. I could probably find when that was drilled. I don't want to say I definitely can because I don't know how far back it was, but they have an Oculus, is what they call it, Oculus side.
It's been since the well was drilled, right?
Yes, sir. And see when that was. It's been there a minute.
What, ten years.
Y'all been here.
I think we need to go with a above ground pump again.
That's what we...
You got any questions?
No, I agree with Bill.
Ms. Shirley?
I do not.
Okay, let me say it back to you again. What you're asking us to do tonight is to decide and put in the minutes, which we won't give you. You will give either one of us, but if we just decide on one, you'll pursue that with whoever. Then we have to, we have to go back to our grants people and get permission to do that because that was not the original plan. And the difference between the two is they do practically the same job, but if we go with submersible, we not only have to buy the pump and things like that, we have to buy the whole, the whole rig and the boss.
There's just more to it, yes, sir.
Controls on.
And the grant will pay for, as much as the grant will pay for, it's just not going to cover the total cost, you know, the vertical turbine is going to be cheaper.
Yeah, the more we, the more we save is the less in the end we'll have to pay if there is a shortage.
Sure.
Okay. The sheriff entertain a motion?
I make that motion. We go with the above ground.
And we have a motion that we asked on to pursue the vertical turbine and for Lynn to pursue the language change in the grant. Is there a second to the motion?
Our second?
Motion second, any discussion on the motion? Hey, Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf, yes?
Yes.
Or, yes, and Sheriff, yes.
Ms. Lynn, will you, can maybe you and I set up a call Monday? Will you, or call me and I'll get up Fred and let's, let's do that Monday. Let's get that, let's get that issue of changing the language and getting an amendment. And I'm not trying to add to your plate, I can help you do that, but let's, let's schedule a call and let's get that done on Monday, just to make sure there's no hiccups, but I don't anticipate there being any. And that was it. I appreciate y'all. I just want to bring that up and get that, you know, out there.
Some of the things I have on here, John, you may already know this, that we got the project extension updates for Jackson and Jefferson.
Yes.
I got those, gun signed. And then we got the extensions for the OYD and Core project.
Oh, I don't know about that one.
Oh, that's right, that's right. Never mind.
Yeah. I saw where you gave me a contract and I've had our legal, you sent it to me maybe Tuesday. I've sent it to our legal team just for review before I sign it. That was not because I think, you know, I just wanted our, our legal team to review that before I sign a contract of that nature. It's a DEO contract that's like 50 pages, so I just, you know, just want to make sure they were okay with everything before I, but I have that printed and I'll sign it as soon as I get the okay.
Now, these extensions are for completion?
Completion?
Construction completion.
That's what I mean.
Yes, sir.
So that's, that's only nine months.
Yep.
That's giving someone a big license, helping them try to road work at night.
These won't be, they won't be needed to work at night. These city streets won't be too bad. There'll be probably four months, five months construction to be completed.
If you do, if you do those four roads in nine months, whoever does that, you need to get them to work it on 77.
Yeah, I'm driving in, a side note, but I saw, I didn't realize how much it bounced across, like it was, you know, on my west and on our east and then on my west driving up, I just, I was just thinking trying to engineer that would be chaos.
You don't, you don't have to cross lanes if you're coming from the front. I don't want to say that, you come all the way on the...
Right. I just were trying to four lane and it just kept going back and forth and I, again, I'm sure that was a tough design, but they're, they're working on it.
Okay. Anything else, Sean?
No, sir. Thank y'all.
Thank you for telling me that. Did you, did you come just to see us tonight? You're coming all the way and we appreciate it.
That's okay, yeah. No, I just, I, this is important. I think the well's out and so I just told Lynn when she called me, I said, hey, let's, let's have a discussion, open discussion and let's make sure we're all on the same page.
Is there anything there that we wouldn't have to approve? You're talking to Mr. Palmer or bids or anything like that? Anything we could approve?
Not yet, no, sir.
You ready to go, you ready to go ahead?
Yep. As soon as, now, as soon as, as soon as we do complete these plans and the DEO, Florida Commerce gives us the go-ahead, I'll bring those bids back. I won't do anything without, you know, telling you guys what the bids are and what those prices are and make a recommendation then once we can advertise.
Okay. Thank you for giving...
Yes, sir. Thank you.
No one has signed in, so Madam Porter?
I'll check down to just the rows. And the other thing is we deferred that grant for the playground, tennis courts and basketball courts. We received that, that's $50,000 and Mayor signed it this week. So that should, update on those projects right there. The other thing is we needed the resolution pertaining to the town election. It's under the clerk tab. The town election will be held December 10th per our charter. And to read the resolution, I'll be under the clerk.
Are you there, Chief?
I'm there. So it's the Resolution 2024-003, a resolution of the town of Wausau, Town Council pertaining to the town election and providing for an effective date. Whereas the Town Council of the town of Wausau, Florida is required by Town Charter for the town of Wausau, Florida. We'll hold an election on the second Tuesday in December in every even year. Now, therefore, it will be resolved by the Town Council of the town of Wausau. The town shall hold an election on December 10th, 2024 and shall advertise as such as provided by the charter for the town of Wausau, Florida. This resolution shall be effective upon final adoption and pass to resolve the 17th day of October 2025 by the Town Council of the town of Wausau. Qualifying will be November 11th through 14th, 18th through 21st and the 25th per our charter.
Okay.
Then the election will be held on December 10th.
And that will all be in the advertising, yes, with the advertising?
Yes.
Okay. Keeping with our current charter, we need to, we need to pass this resolution and approve the advertising of dates. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion as second. We've got a motion as second, any discussion on the motion? Mr. Wolf, same way, but...
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Sheriff, yes.
The cemetery deed update, Jeff did look it over, the cemetery deed that we have and it was perfectly fine with him. He changed and put his name on it, so we've got that, we've got that updated that we talked about at our last meeting. There's a bill adjustment. If you look under billing adjustments tab, it's the account number 165. He had a leak due to the heavy equipment that has been running up and down the road for the four lane project. I put at the bottom of it, I averaged his bill for the last 12 months and this overage would be about $41.87 for him. If you average six months, it would be about $40.70 for him, but he has said he will not pay it. So I told him I'd have to come to the council to see if he were willing to forgive it. He feels like if he had left the water on or if it hadn't, it had been something due to his negligence, but...
Have you, have you or Philip satisfied yourselves that it was heavy equipment that needed?
That it was what?
Heavy equipment.
I, I don't know. It was right at the meter, but it was on his side and...
Who, who fixed it?
Where's this at? Oh, okay. This is south of, south in Wausau.
Who fixed it or is it fixed?
Philip helped him fix it, although it was on his side. It was four o'clock in the afternoon. He was not able to, we had to dig down, Philip had to dig down and get in the hole just to see where the cutoff was. And so once we got down there to the cutoff and saw what it was, it was on his side, but it was now 4:30. He didn't think it was anywhere he could get the parts, so we did loaning the parts to fix it with. And Philip helped him fix it because it was late in the afternoon.
And who did the heavy equipment wrong to?
I think it's something to do with the four lane, I don't know. They broke ours down at my house three times, driving over them. They're just taking these big pieces of equipment, driving up and down the road and they, down where we live, it's real bad.
Don't take much...
They've broke ours three times already.
Has this handled before? And they're using their heavy equipment. Besides your house, you're none in the city area.
I don't know. I mean, you know.
I mean, who pays for it?
We fixed our own.
They, they do.
There's so many, there's so many people, there's so many contractors out there right now, it's crazy. And I said, and I said, maybe you need to go to the, you know, see if you can find out the contractors. And he said he wouldn't do that. He'd been a customer for years and years and years, many years, and that he would disconnect from the town water system before he would pay the money. So they're out of town this, I asked him to come to the council, they're out of town tonight. They've left, had some previously scheduled, so I told him I would bring it up to the council and see what y'all want to do. The value of it would be about 40, between $40 and $41. I want, no, just a one time. 40. See, his bill is usually this, and this, I think it was 112, 122.
Oh, for all particular...
Yeah, so it would be one time.
You know, I'm sure Ray know him, he's selling the truth, so I would be in favor of admitting that and, you know, that's, this is just one person now. They four, four more here, so I'd be in favor of giving him credit and getting that.
I agree with Ms. Carter, I think, that contractor or somebody...
Yeah, it's less of a...
This is retrospect, it's, you know, it's been happening now a month or six weeks. There's no way we could prove anything or not, but that area where he's at, there is lots of either REA or the road construction, there's a lot of traffic on his, on his side and even on to his property. I think they probably, and I agree with you, knowing, knowing the character of the person and all, he probably, he knows or certainly feels strongly that happened. I wish we had some evidence that it was because it was on his side of the...
Yeah.
That does raise the, that does raise the, I don't have to raise a legal question or not, but without, without, I always fear about, we're going to meet next month too. And...
Yeah.
The state may do that 10 times in one month. I think someone needs to talk to the contractors, approach them with.
They, you know, that's happened two times at least on my house and they've always fixed it. Water's been all, maybe three or four hours, but they get on it and fix it to, you know...
It sounds like something that's going to be happening over the next, could, could happen over the next two or three years, especially if we have a major charter located or hard to see. I may recommend that we ask Mr. Carter, since we don't have documentation, can, can we do this based on the testimony, you know, the fact that Philip went down there and it is due right away and all these other things that are maybe circumstantial evidences that has happened before and is happening and all of that. I agree with you. When I look at every month, the highest bill I think I see is, is 80 something dollars, $87, $82, 80, 78, 77 and so on. Okay. What's the pleasure of the challenge? Or what, what do you tell me, Sheriff, yes?
I agree with John and you.
I think somebody needs to say something to the contractors that's in that area. They may be just...
Yeah.
Paying. I mean, like I said, they could have 10 times in one month.
And we do have an agreement with the contracts that are working on, on the four lane project that they will fix the, anything that they break. This was late in the afternoon, I don't know who had been through there that day.
So we don't have multiple contractors?
There's multiple contractors.
Yeah, that's, that's... But we need to pursue it.
I don't think so.
Let's do this. Let me suggest, we have a representative, DUT, don't we? Why don't you approach that person and ask him to whichever contractors was working in that vicinity to contact Vale and, and see if he can help us recapture this. Probably, you know, we've got Philip Labor included there and things like that, but Just see if, see if the O T can help us with contractors.
All right.
To, does that sound like a good shot?
Yeah. I don't think we need to just.
Yeah.
Forgive it.
Sure, I agree.
Okay, so, so we'll try to get, we'll try to get it back and, and ask him to kind of caution them again. You know, I know they have these, we can say a few meetings on that, and I used to have to go through them because they have them, they won't through here, but sometimes they have dynamite on site or hazardous materials, and, so I know they meet, uh, every two weeks or months, I mean. If you do that, so, then that brings us back to your suggestion that we go to his average bill, or what was your?
I just, I just mentioned the fact that we shut on it, it was at, you know, right off of, you know, forty-five dollars, you know, that, so... But now, I mean, like I said, it could happen again, it looked like the effort who did it, the company he worked for would pay the bill, I'm sure they probably will if he asked, you know?
I'll put us another newsletter.
Well, I don't know.
We just got ready to go, it's already in the pampalos.
Because I was saying, we may have to send out some of one of our newsletters that say that there's, um, construction going on, we've had some reports of, uh, damages, uh, from some of the residences, uh, please make us aware. And if you can, get the name of the, remember the date, the name of the contractor, something like that, so we can...
As soon as possible. Not, don't wait a month until your bill's like a thousand dollars.
Yeah. I mean, we need to come out back to it again. Well, uh, yeah, we'll have a call, we might get a motion here.
Well, I suggest having a deal with stuff like this when I've done heavy equipment and working utilities. This can be a recurring problem, especially coming through, uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, because you can, I can, when you got, especially the neoprene fins to cut, the cities using now, the neoprene line and stuff. Those fins are unpop with a, with a, you know, a hundred ton tractor running from me and you from it, because they're not that deep in the ground, and a bullet loops and they're leaking. So, uh, the general contractor is C W Roberts, if I'm not mistaken.
The names in general.
And that's, that's, too, when even when I was working on Wallace, soon as doing pipe boards and other companies, they, the cities or municipalities were willing to go, and they would have something like this, they would go to the general contractor, and your contractor would come back and say, you was right there that day, because that's their responsibility, or it was then. And. They paid for it. They paid for it, I don't think you have a problem getting reimbursed for it.
I think that's what we're...
And, uh, it coming through here, you may have that occur more than one or two times, you're coming right through town with all the houses in the meters that's close to some of the roads that they're having to go to. And it may be a leak, it's not detected for a bill or one or two billing cycles, because if, if it's working loose because of the way that the heavy equipment is, then it might not show up a whole lot till, you know, till it's either spewing out or leaking enough that people will notice, you know, happen to a cycle, so... That's what I was suggesting, it's just, you know, from my past experience of working in that and being around both.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Mr. Wolfson, do you want my motion?
No, I don't, I, I...
All the, uh...
I'll make it.
Okay.
I'm my promotion that we can't pay contract. See, if it's their fault, notify them how much the bill is and where it was at today, see if we find out who it was. See, give them the opportunity to pay for it. And I agree, he shouldn't have to pay, maybe, but contractors should.
Okay, and that, okay, I think we've got two motions, I was thinking one from Mr. Wolfson, that we forgive the forty dollars or the, was it the forty or the forty-four?
Well, now, he ain't gonna pay it, you know, that's just, he's just getting to the fact that he ain't gonna pay it.
He does have a pre-existing will that he can, he can do it to, I'd rather have his business.
Yeah. I know Ray enough, he ain't gonna pay it, if he said he ain't gonna do it, he ain't gonna do it.
Which of these, these bills are the most likely?
This is the one, that's forty-one eighty-seven, right?
For you, for you, forty-one eighty-seven, but that's the difference between last month and this one, is that what that?
The twelve months' average was eighty-seventy-nine, so the difference is eighty-seventy-nine and one-twenty-two, be around forty-one eighty-seven. I don't think a dollar, whatever's gonna hurt.
No, it don't hurt for you.
Okay, let's vote on Ms. Carter's, let's get a second on Ms. Carter's motion. Is, is there a second on Ms. Carter's motion, contract, contact the contractors?
I'll say that.
Company about motion, second, discussion motion. Hey, vote for her.
Yes.
Or, yes, is that right?
Yes.
Yes.
Sheriff's yes. Okay, now, your motion is to forgive the forty-one eighty-seven?
Well, maybe I need to quote that as saying, if we can't collect it from the effort who did it, the contractor that did it, uh...
Now, the whole contractor being responsible for it is, uh, it was what the Hooper's, you know, called Ray Hooper.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about, right, oh, yeah, I think that's what I'm talking about.
So we can need, we can need to try to figure forty-one eighty-seven, forty-seven. And Ray will have to figure this out.
Yeah, he don't want, yeah, I don't want to be...
Forty-one eighty-seven, hey, give Ray the benefit of the doubt.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Somebody make that motion, please.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion that we forgive forty-one eighty-seven of the bill, and, uh, part of the formal motion was that, uh, uh, Ms. Carter's gonna try to collect that from the contractor, is there a second to that motion?
A second.
We have a motion and second, discussion motion. Hey, vote for Mr. Wolfson.
Yes.
Is that right, Bert?
Yes.
That's far?
Yes.
That's far?
Yes.
And the sheriff's yes.
I have the thing I...
We need, uh, yeah, just, just maybe in passing, or it is, you have, I can, let's talk to Ms. Carter about that, because I, I can just see, I can just see between now and twenty-twenty-seven, I can see a lot of, lots of round, lots of round, a lot of round checking going on.
The only other thing I had was a suggestion to, um, look into getting a debit card for the volunteer fire fund account. I'm trying to throw around some ideas about how we can give them the opportunity to buy what they need without having to write blank checks, or give them the, the town's credit card. Um, at their Renegade Fest, they went over what they have in the account, and the check was bad, they wrote a bad check. Uh, we, I did, the bank did call me, and I was able to go up there by ten, should have come there by ten-thirty, I could give them, put some money there, so I took, somebody had a general fund and loaned it to them. Um, and then I'll take that back with their Renegade Fest money, but just, the practice in the past was to give them signed blank checks, which I just think is a bad idea. And, um, the town credit card is such a high limit, I did loan it to them one time, and it was lost for about a week, so I'm not comfortable with that either. So my thought was if we could get them a debit card where all they can debit out is what's in there, we can leave it at the town hall, they want to do something, they can pick it up, go buy it, bring their receipts back, and bring the card back. Other than that, I don't have a good idea, they like to shop in, at Tates in Alabama, and so, you know, they'll come get the card a couple of days ahead of time, because they can get it cheaper, but having the town credit card out there, because the credit card we have has the pin and everything stamped on the back of it. So if you lose it, anybody can use it. My other idea to try to make them so where they can use their money properly would be to get a debit card. Unless y'all have some better idea, I'm open for suggestions.
If they use a debit card, it only comes out of their general fund.
Out of, out of this volunteer fund, and it will be cut off when they run out of money.
And no more bad checks.
Right.
That's the best way to go.
Right. I don't, my, that check that they had my and Judy's name on it, I don't like my name on checks, that's about bad. I don't like that at all, I don't like it.
Are you sure that it will cut off, because you know, a lot of the regular debit cards accounts will allow you to overdraw your account?
Yeah, I, I talked to the lady at the bank briefly, she said we can set it to where it won't overdraft at all, where it would cut off. As long as we don't put the overdraft protection on it, it won't let it go, it will, it will cut them off at that point. Well, shall I have a better idea?
That sounds okay to me, I mean, that's fine to me.
Did, did, did we not think last month that our meeting almost went into overtime because we were trying to have an understanding with the fire department, with the fire chief? And did we not think when he left here, he had an understanding about what they needed to do?
Well, he entered in the receipts and everything, he was like you asking.
A few days late?
And four or five days later.
And, and the money? Uh... I'd like for our clerk to contact the clerks in a couple of our other towns to see do they have monies. See, just there, just there. When we said this, uh, I, I, Ms. Evans, that's a second thought, but, when, when money goes in the CDs, banking account, and through their booths, and we're managing all that, we're responsible for it, uh... I, I know they do a lot of fundraising, and they do a lot of good, they do good fundraisers, but, but we're not having any control over how that money spend. If we say, this is your money, you spend it, they can go buy anything, come inside that fire department, it's, you know, not, not defacing or anything like that, they can buy, uh, uh, well, they, they buy, they buy, they buy everybody a pop sick or a, or a bass sick. There's no, there's no controls on, 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 on what that money can be used to spend. I think, I think the premise behind it was, if they raise these monies, they ought to be able to spend it on those things that we in the county funds fall short of. Airbags, uh, uh, specialty technology or, or some things like that. We spend a lot of money on cokes and cookies, I think. We have a lot of, am I right, we have a lot of, I don't wanna call them party expenditures, but we have some things that's up for firefighting. And, and I think that ought to be, if you sell me a fish plate, and I can tell you, every time I've had a fish fried, and I was in town, I've always bought, my wife and me, fish, pork, whatever it was, and added to that at, at least, uh, a hundred dollars. If you go back and look in the deposits and things, I guess you have that record, you'll probably find that that I've given more to the fire department than most any other single person, and I would say this is the first time I've ever mentioned that, nobody knows what I give or what I do, but I always have done that. And, uh, I kinda like to know that this being spent, where it's affecting the, the fire department, where it's making it better for the people who want some of that fire protection.
Well, maybe we need to set up a, maybe not a fund, but maybe a allowance that you could spend on the five hundred, eight hundred dollars on a fundraiser. And let them use the debit card, so they know when they get to seven hundred ninety-nine dollars, it's time to, they can do the math before they get to the grocery store. And find out how much ribs it's gonna be, and stay within that limit.
Yeah, what we're talking about now, I think, addresses it much better than having the base, I never have like blank checks, uh, not, not just fire department, I just don't like to use a blank check, don't like to counter sign chickens, sometimes you have to, I understand that. And I, for sure, I for sure am opposed to the town's credit card going out.
In all directions.
In, in all directions, we had a little bit of credit card tension here a few years ago, but I don't want that to come back on discount, so we, we, we've just been too cohesive in things like that, but, uh, those credit cards needs to be, do, do we have a, do, can any of us pick up a credit card?
How much money did they spend on, on supplies for the, uh, last one, Richard?
I haven't, I haven't told them, it was over a thousand dollars. And, uh, I think they turned back in two thousand, two thousand one hundred or something like that, so...
That sounds like they did good, good fundraiser, they do good?
They do good fundraisers, when they have, well, they have a good turnout, in fact, like at Easter, when they do the Easter egg, how much do they spend for that? At Christmas, how much do they spend for that? We need a general idea of how much they spend, like, so we can set it, whether we set it for five hundred, eight hundred dollars.
Right.
We can leave within their limit.
So, will our budget page shows the fundraiser account?
Um, I don't know if it does with a volunteer, I'm not sure, People's South, I see the last one. The statement on that comes in way later, I think I did, yeah, it's the very last one, volunteer fundraiser. Now, it's not one thousand seven hundred sixty-three, twenty-three, because the expenses have not come out over here, it's under the budget tab, and it's the very, it's the last one, at the top it says volunteer fire fund.
Yeah, just before you get the money, just for...
It's not this much, it's probably down to a thousand or less. Budget, Judy, I can't remember if it's much, it's the very last one.
So they got less than seventeen hundred in there?
Yeah, I think it's more like a thousand, this was just for the bank statement, reconciling to the bank statement. So the Renegade Fest has not come out yet. I did, I did put the money in there, but the receipts have not, not come out yet.
Mr. Phillips, I, I know you're not, I suppose, for the fire department necessarily, I know you're a member of it, uh, do you feel comfortable in that, us asking a question to you?
Um, I feel comfortable with you asking, if you give me the option, would you be comfortable with it?
How, how are the fundraisers determined, and how often, and, and, uh, budgets for the fundraiser, how's that, how's that determined?
Uh, really, that's kind of done in the background, we don't talk about what the budgets are in our meetings, uh, it's just determined if we're gonna have them, we're gonna buy meat, and then somebody is assigned to go buy it. Um, and, and I think our fundraisers are pretty set, though, we do the, um, uh, the Easter, no, it's not a fundraiser, it's a gift to the community.
Right.
The, really, our...
But it's an expense to the fire department.
Absolutely, yeah, it is an expense, but it's not, we don't take any money for that. Uh, and really don't, the major fundraisers that we do are the haunted house, which is going on right now, uh, and then the, uh, the street fest that just happened, that's our really, our major fundraisers. So we really don't, quote-unquote, decide on those, those are something that we just do every year, uh, and we really don't vote in the meetings, hey, this is our budget, we just decide what we're gonna eat, and then somebody goes and buys it.
Are you, are you not doing fundraisers now at the fun day activities, or in the spring, the fish fry, or that?
Uh, I think we did do one in the spring, now that you remind me of that, uh, fun days, this is the first year for years we've actually been involved in the fun day again, we didn't do too good, I think either we lost money or made a hundred bucks or something, so it wasn't really, um, something that we might not pursue again, because we just didn't make as much money as we thought. Uh, unless we reorganize that in some way, uh, but, yeah, you're right, I think we do do another rib cookout. Well, we did the fundraiser for the gentleman that, um, lost his house, um, so, we've only been here a year, so that's my, but we don't, it's not really, we don't really sit around and vote on budgets on that, amounts, we just, somebody says, hey, we're gonna have a fundraiser, and everyone agrees, kind of done in the background.
Does, in the background, meaning?
A couple of people, a couple of people take care of it, right, like, I've never seen any income statements or algo statements, right?
That was the next question, does the fire department have any idea how much y'all have?
No. I've never seen any income in algo, I, I personally do public, um, public requests, public information requests, so that I can keep up with them, but I, um, we don't get reported on that.
They're given to them, they just don't share with the fire.
Well, that's, I was thinking, how can you, how can you recently vote to do, uh, fundraiser, or whatever it's, and decide what you want, be to me, you, or the car wash, whatever, how can you do that, if you don't know what you've got planned or not?
And I discussed that with, with Cowboy, the chief, I'm like, you know, you're, you're going out there in the blazing hot sun, you're spending twelve hundred, you're making fourteen hundred, it's a lot of work for two hundred dollars, it's really worth your time, y'all need to assess if this is gonna be worth my time.
Yeah, and I don't have a problem with that, if they want to do it, and, and make a hundred dollars or make fifty dollars, I do have a problem with the money, we have to be accountable for, be honest and forth, have to pass through our, I do, I am concerned about that. I remember talking about the Easter thing, uh, I remember Mrs. Ru, actually, I think, uh, to Mr. Ruins and Mr. Smith, that kind of was an idea of theirs, a great idea, we thought, and, and still do. But I remember he said, this is not a fire department function, the people that's doing this is home to fire department, but this is a community function. The people that's doing this is home to the fire department, but this is a community function." So they didn't hate us. But I think enough areas around here, oh, somebody's gonna do something yourself that ain't fire department, how they get fire department.
No, I, um, my understanding, my, my involvement has been, it's been pronounced as being a fire department. There might have been in the past that statement might have been made, but I believe it's currently determined to be.
Our recent past still scares me. I don't, I don't, I don't want to live with those things again, some of those ones. Okay? We probably lost, we probably lost the trail somewhere. So if we can get back on track and turn by six o'clock, what? Tell me again, your suggestion that we get a debit card or the fundraising account only?
Right.
If we house at the city hall and, and, oh, now, see, here's the thing. If they overspend a check or a debit card or.
That's why I said, put a limit on the debit card. They can only spend just a thousand dollars per fundraiser. Over that, they have to come to the, they have to come to the city.
Yeah, but when they come to the city, where they gonna get it from?
I don't know.
City money.
If we do a debit.
That's what I was saying.
If we do a debit card, they can only spend what they got. That's it. They're gonna be cut off.
Okay.
Download to stay within their limits.
And I agree, and I'm not, I'm not just agreeing, I'm just saying that we got to, we got to help them. This is news to some of them as well. Now, there was a regime that for ten, twelve years, twenty years, I, Mr. Phillips said, knew what was going on and, 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 uh, they had worked it out and it apparently worked. But, uh, some of the, some of the fellows we've got now, uh, Mr. Smith has got a long time to spare, but I don't know about, uh, uh, Mr. Owen and some of the others. We, we need to help, we need to help them. But we don't, we don't come on out of beating on head accusing them of that, but just looking at them or doing. So we put a, a cap on that. There should be no way to source man. If it is those men, I, I, I'm opposed to us. The fundraiser was supposed to supplement the budget. I'm opposed to the budget supplementing the fundraiser. Okay, was that, to begin, or is, was that a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
So we use a debit card and how much we gonna make the money?
Again, I think that's going to depend on what fundraiser they gonna do. They, they gonna need a thousand dollars for the ribs or, or smoke bugs or whatever.
Hey, the land we go make whatever is in their account, that's a bank.
It should be. I mean, if they wanna spend it all on one fundraiser, then they're out of money.
I mean, they'll stop when the money runs out.
Yeah. It'll cut off. It's usually about, it's around a thousand dollars for almost all the fundraisers they have. Some are a little over. Um, the street fest was a little, was over because they paid a man three hundred dollars to sing, which is something they typically don't have at that expense. But they paid three hundred dollars for music. So they went, they were over a thousand at that one. And if they can spend it off.
I guess, well, I mean, always send me like, oh, we're doing to spend money on fundraisers.
I think they're spending it, making it, spending it, making it.
They, they're making that money to have another fundraiser. When is that fundraiser money gonna start buying some backup lines or some doors, another siren or hoes or some things that's.
That's not.
For fire, for fire department. We're just, we're just gonna be doing this with the money is kind of just rubbing it over.
That's what I was talking about when I had the discussion with Cowboy. I'm like, y'all are doing a lot of work, but you're not getting anywhere. You're a hundred dollars here, two hundred dollars there. You're not really doing anything, but, you know, I'm, I'm in exposure for the fire department.
I, I, I would hate for, to, to ask how you're, Mr. Phillips, anyone to come back and just, there's so many things you have to do because of sunshine and things that, that just, if relaxed about it, we have to do perfectly, but I don't want somebody to come in here all the time and seem like we're kind of down or something, but, um, and I don't mind maybe with them at a fire department meeting or something like that sometime, uh, and, and discuss the need either for a fundraiser. Or, or ask Mr., uh, ask Mr. Carter. Can we say, we wanna take this out of the budget, out of the county, uh, out of the city's budget? Let them get a three line column notebook over there and, and make money and spend money. If we're gonna let them make money and spend money the way they want to, let's get it out of our order. If we can do that. I'd like to know if any other city has how they set up their fundraiser money. I'm, I'm gonna be pretty sure that we're gonna find out if it is. Uh, it's fundraiser, but it is for the city. And they're gonna go, ah, you're trying to get our money. Well, it ain't their money. It's the fire department money. It's the community's money. Sure.
I'm gonna say that a lot of fire departments are organized with what they call a fire department auxiliary that operates independent of government agencies. And they raise money to buy the department new shirts, you know, new visors, whatever.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
And so they, they do, they remain separate, right? It's like, sometimes it's called the woman's auxiliary, sometimes it's just called auxiliary, but it, it does operate outside. Well, of course, that way for Mr. Carter, way in on that kind of stuff. But I'm saying that's how some fire departments are organized. They, they keep it outside.
Yeah.
But I understand, I think in the past, y'all kind of pulled it in because of some of the issues, right? So gotta keep all that on.
Yeah, yeah. And, and if it had been operating that way then, the city wouldn't have been involved in those issues.
Oh, that's.
If, if, uh, it didn't have any checks and balances.
True.
Okay. All right, wait, you did make a question.
I did make a question first to get a debit card.
A debit card and, and settle limit or?
Whatever they got in the account.
Just give them the debit card. We're not out of money, they're out of one.
I like, I like that. Did we, did we, did we get a debit card for the, uh, fire department fundraising, uh, fund or line item, whatever you call it? And, uh, they still have to bring in the receipts and the, turn the cash back in and things like that.
Right.
Okay, is there a second to that?
No, second.
Got a motion and a second discussion on the motion. Okay. Is that her?
Yes.
That's Wolf Sam?
Yes.
Sheriff O'Shea's, Mr. Park?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
Okay.
So I have.
That's all you had. Okay. Uh, Mr. Park, you have anything?
Well, it's a letter. I don't know if y'all have any sense of reading about, uh, or about, uh, fence.
Yes.
Forgot about the letter.
It's under the card.
I didn't read it.
It's under the card tab.
Something in the, yeah, first.
No, looks pretty good, bud.
Yeah. I like just to find more.
I can't hardly seem to read. I like it, I can look at it.
Yeah. Mr. Park mentioned this last month, and this is a letter, uh, from the mayor design, asking that we, asking that the state consider and fund extending the payment on C B seven to the east side of Coraline. Oil, or oil drive, the oil drive. It says oil drive.
We did get what metric and got what the new plans were for the paving. And then Philip went out and measured from the, the end of the new plans to the other side of oil. So that's where I got the one thousand eighty-six approximate feet.
Just, just less than four of a mile. We're asking the, uh, we're asking the state while they're here and doing that, and they're gonna pave a portion of ours anyway to get past that branch or that little creek there. Would they extend their paving on to, uh, the east side of oil drive? And rendering that as a motion, Mr. Park?
Yes.
Did we send this letter? Motion is a second?
A second.
Motion is second discussion on the motion. Mr. Park?
Yes.
Is that her?
Yes.
Mr. Park?
Yes.
Sheriff O'Shea's. Anything else, Mr. Park? Do, do we need to send one to the council or just?
Uh, I'm going to, I'm gonna go ahead and copy them on it. And, uh, when I talked to Jason Williams at the D O T, he said that he's gonna coordinate the conversations for us.
Okay.
So somebody send it to him first. I'm gonna copy him and I'm gonna copy, uh, metric, who's the lead, um, engineer on that D O T project. So.
And I think they're still basing the candidates in here with some of their stuff, I think.
Okay.
Anything else, Mr. Park?
That's all.
Is that her?
No.
Wolf Sam? Matt, Mr. Parker?
How are we coming on the, the deal with, uh, Mr. Register?
Um, I met with two companies this week, uh, last week, just in general conversation. We didn't go into specific details because we'll need a final job description, whatever. Um, but I talked to both of them. They basically told me we wouldn't be able to hire anybody cheaper than what Mr. Register's doing. I can still put it out there. I did go to Florida Royal Water. They gave me a, um, like a job description kind of thing to, to look at. And, um, so basically what they said is you have to determine what you want them to do. What do you want your water operator to do? Cause it can be as easy as what Mr. Roacher does. Comes to the well three days a week, draws water samples, sends them off, brings them back, which is basically what he does, fills out the forms. Or you, it can be as detailed as creating a, a system of, you know, maintenance on the well and that kind of stuff. We don't get that right now from Mr. Register. Basically, he draws samples. Um, some of them have to be drawn by the water operator, but a lot of them, I think, can probably be drawn by Philip. And so I'm gonna bring to the council next month the, uh, job description kind of thing that Royal Water sent me, as if that's what we want to do. Uh, and so both of the guys I talked to, they had, they had called the town and said, are y'all looking for a water operator? I guess it's starting to get out there. And, um, I said, well, come talk to me about what you can do. They can do very detailed stuff. They can basically be in charge of the water system where I don't have to do anything. They can do all the paperwork. They'll meet with D E P for us. Um, they'll do the water audits, which is, we all do that ourselves now. So depending on what we are willing to pay, it will depend on what service we want. Um, both of them told me for the basic three days a week, which is what we have to have, the water samples, we probably won't get it less than what we're paying him. If we do, it's just gonna be a small amount. But we can still throw it out there and see, you know, see what happens.
I thought you gave them a name, did it now about twenty or twenty-five?
What now?
Annually, what are we doing now about?
It's seventeen hundred a month, unless he does something special.
About two thousand five hundred? I mean, twenty-five?
Let me see. I need to use this file here, it's seventeen hundred a month. Times twelve, that's twenty thousand four hundred.
I wonder would Vernon and Chieftain be what be interested in? In seven, if it would supplement their payment to, uh, to an employee, if they could sub it to us or something like that to go up with. They, they have full time employers, I think. Chieftain does, I think. I don't know about Vernon.
Take it down.
Okay.
Would you do that?
Yeah, I'd take it.
I'm, I'm far getting it, Chief.
Me too.
I'm trying. I don't like being that, I don't like being that high.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all I got. I just want something else about that.
I'll be very, very quick. Uh, the review of our water beetles, I looked at that. Uh, we got some that's getting two or three months behind now. And I noticed, I don't know if you were able to take it off computer or you just whited it out? Those things about.
We whited it out because we're still trying to figure out how to get it off.
Okay. Uh, the, the water beetles, we do, uh, we still couple thousand dollars.
Um, yeah, Landry is on a payment plan already. Uh, we've, um, the one forty-seven on there, the number one forty-seven is in jail. But he is cut off. One seventy-four is in jail, but he is cut off. The two thirty-four was cut off for over a month. She's come back and is paying weekly now. Uh, I've turned her back on. She's, she's coming in every week now, dropping money. So that should be paid off by the, maybe not the end of this month, they're pretty close.
Okay.
How about two twenty-nine? Two twenty-nine. So he moved, he got displaced at where the Dollar General is. Moved over to down here on, um, Mud Hill Road. There was a deposit already there and some credit money from the lady that had lived there that left overnight. She left in the middle of the night. I don't, I don't know where to send her to. So he, um, he had, he had basically been living on her credit for just a minute. But, well, uh, we've assigned all the bill back over to him now and he is paying an extra, he's paying two hundred, a hundred dollars every two weeks to get that, his pay back down.
So.
He, the one that says.
Yeah, that one will pay them.
Yes, the one that says current, that's the one that's due this month by the end of the month. The age one is from the last month. Um, the oh ninety-one, I just noticed him on there early. I'll have to get Kim to call about him. And the rest of these were people that came in with cash money that we did not have change or they did not have the exact amount or whatever. But Kim and I have a plan now for trying, we're just not gonna do it anymore. You got, you'll have to pay over. If we don't have any change, instead of paying under, you'll have to pay over. Just give them credit. Yeah, but you have to do credit because I'm like, we gotta get this stuff off this. I, I don't like this.
Yeah. Uh, uh. I lost my tongue. Oh, they, uh. We only have, we only have, uh, three. Two, they're just two months behind. So, so when we had these things, they were so big, we started working on all of that. And when they don't pay, when does the cutoff start?
Uh, if they have not paid by the first, so for this bill that we're at now, if they don't pay by the very last day of this month, on the first, we go cut them off. Um, that was.
They shouldn't be anymore age one, age two.
Right.
Unless they admit.
Right.
This, with extenuating circumstances.
Right, and we only had, the two, the, the two thirty-four, she was without water for, um, over a month, probably about six weeks. And, um, then finally called and said, listen, I'm trying to go to work every day. I don't have any water. Can I work something out? Um, her parents called and said, listen, if she don't make payments to you every week, we'll pick it up. So she's been making par, payments every week on these back, this back bill to get her water cut back on. So she is coming and paying, but we had left her off for quite a, for quite a while.
Okay. But two thousand dollars still seems a little high, but it's why they came out.
And the only ones that's, uh, two months behind, if you look down the bottom, it's three, it's three hundred and fifty-eight dollars on that first page. The eleven fourteen forty-three, that's, those are bills that are due this month. That if they're not paid by the end of this month, will be cut off. It's these under the current bill. So they still have time to get their money in. Eleven hundred forty-four dollars.
That's good. Yeah, that's, anyway, it's my question. That, that's, that's me. Uh, when you, when you're talking to Cowboy, talking about everything like that, and I see a new roster also, uh, did y'all, did y'all look at the, the fire minutes?
Oh, I did.
Okay, you got, you got, uh, tenders. You got, I'll cover you up two there, the same name or the same signature, I guess. Is that person signing twice or they, John and Jane?
I think it's two different people.
Two different people. And same thing then with, uh, with, uh, well, that is the same thing. That is the same thing. Okay, all right. But, but.
John and Jane, Maria.
Maybe, and that's good, that's good. I just, we don't, we don't have.
Martin.
Yeah, uh, Jeff has a cousin that's.
And there are two Janes?
Uh, probably. I don't know the, that's the person. Uh, probably, I don't know the, that's the first name, but he has a cousin that's coming to the Martin Center.
They have another cousin, oh, there's a J, two J's and a T on the next one. It's three of them.
Oh, maybe his wife.
It's three of them, could be.
Yeah.
Could be.
Okay, so.
But, but our, our work was called, probably the colors are about twenty people or something. We got eight that's going to, and if the eight, we probably got three or four that's going to a fire. Okay? And then the last thing, uh, you already answered, we're gonna feedback on some of your, did you, you already answered that? Anybody in the audience that needs to see the city, the council of Coolfield, or anybody else needs to see National Council? All right, our next meeting will be, it's going to be, you're November?
It's November twenty-first.
Judy, would you like to chair that?
When?
The November meeting, the twenty-first?
I can't.
You can? Okay, she may not be here. We saw Christie yesterday, she was telling people in the hospital, how long they hoping on it, and, and, uh, I'd walked away, but Nancy heard her tale, one of those other nurses, that man gives it that, where it walks on, they, you know, that's it. And my mom, my, my mom just, my space, I told Nancy, I'm a student, we're gonna beat my own. So, so pretty soon to one night.
Okay, I'll do one night, nobody ride to a dog.
Okay, and I agree, do it just so that we enjoy, all of us enjoy, okay? We're standing here.